From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with a flag salute, and that will be led by Brent Hughes, Kern County Probation Supervisor. And if you could remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation unabated, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. If you'd like to follow along with our agenda today, they are located at the two tables near the exits. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I will read the consent agenda, starting on page two. Items six through eight are on consent. On page three, we have item 11 on consent, as well as 13, and 14, and 16. On page four, items 17 and 18 are on consent, as well as items 20 through 23. And finally, on page five, items 24 and 25 are on consent. So I'll ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to make a comment on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and ask if any board members would like to remove an item, or I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, and that brings us back to page two on our agenda. Item number one, under Resolutions/Proclamations. This will proclaim July 26, 2017, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Kern County, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Motion on the proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my honor today to present this proclamation. Little background, on July 26, 1990, George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. The Act provides for civil rights in prohibiting discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life. That includes jobs, schools, transportation, and all public and private places that are open to the general public. The Independent Living Center of Kern County, these are folks who are here with me today, I'm going to introduce them in a second, is recognized as an agency to empower people with disabilities to live as independently as possible through its programs and services, and for educating the Kern community about disability-related issues. So I'd like to read the proclamation and turn it over to Jim Soto, who's the Executive Director at the Independent Living Center of Kern County. Proclamation reads, "The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed July 26, 2017, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered in the official Board Minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair, Zack Scrivener, dated today, July 18, 2017." Jim, would you like to say a couple words?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I got it. Thank you, Supervisor Couch. I want to thank the Board Chair and this board for this proclamation, for the Independent Living Center of Kern County. You know, this board has been very supportive of us, not only for this year, but in the past years for the ADA celebrations, and I also want to thank you in advance for prior bills that you guys have supported for us, Assembly Bill 2565 and Assembly Bill 763 that you guys have supported us. I just wanted to make sure I thank you. The event is going to be, we're going to have an ADA celebration on the 26th, which is Wednesday of next week. I think all the board supervisors have gone to invitation. Supervisor Scrivener's office, I think, is going to be attending, but you're all welcome to come. It's a celebration, but it's also a time to educate not only people with disabilities, but businesses and local government, so that we can all come together and make Bakersfield and this county an accessible place for all people with disabilities. So thank you again for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Soto, and thank you Supervisor Couch. The next item on the agenda is item two, proclaim August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Perez will make this presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. A motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
I am pleased to make this presentation proclaiming August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County. In 1995, August was proclaimed National Child Support Awareness Month by President Bill Clinton. In his proclamation, he stated, "Providing for our children is one of humanity's worthiest and most fundamental endeavors. Children are the best part of ourselves, the sum of our past and the promise of our future, the guarantee that our lives and values and dreams will flourish long after we are gone." Sadly, however, many parents in our country today deny the instinct to care for their children, failing to provide even the most basic economic support. Millions do not receive the financial support they need to lead secure and healthy lives. This month, we encourage our community to recognize the importance of child support, the positive impacts to the stability, happiness, and security of our children. We also recognize the child support professionals who help families participate in the child support program. Our very own County Child Support Services team delivers outstanding services every day to ensure that children receive the financial resources necessary for their well-being. Last year, we had more than 55,000 children, 55,000, and families participate in the local child support program. Chairman and members of the board, I join you today as we proclaim August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County, as we recognize the families who participate in the program, and our county Child Support Service Department for all that they do to ensure children grow and thrive right here in our home. It's with great pleasure and gratitude that we proclaim April, excuse me, August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County. This recognition has been entered into the official Board Minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Mr. Zack Scrivener.
Floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Scrivener and Supervisor Perez, members of the board. Our children are our future, ensuring that they have the necessary resources to bring them into that future and realize their full maximum potential is paramount in ensuring their success. As a father of three beautiful daughters, I know how important my contribution is in helping them to become beautiful, successful women who will make significant contributions in the world. Child Support Awareness Month gives us the opportunity to highlight the importance of supporting children. The employees of Kern County Department of Child Support Services do their best daily to ensure families have the financial and medical resources necessary to not only survive, but thrive and achieve greatness. We recognize the power of community enables us to do more, together to help our children to be successful. Our signature event in August is our Ready Set Back to School Health and Wellness Fair. This event will be held Thursday, August 4th, from 9:00 to noon at the Kern County Fairgrounds. We will give away over 4,000 backpacks at this event, as well as providing 50 partner agencies that will provide resource information and services to families. There will also be fun activities for children, such as face painting, arts and crafts, and youth entertainment, provided by Stay Focused for Greatness Ministries. The Immunization Mobile will be providing immunizations. Health and dental screenings will also be available. There will also be free haircuts and hairstyling. In addition to the Bakersfield event, we will hold a Health and Wellness Fair in the Kerr McGee Center in Ridgecrest on August 10th, from 9:00 to noon. Yes, we get to be inside this year. We will also partner with the Kern County Libraries and provide backpacks in outlined communities of Delano, Arvin, Buttonwillow, Tehachapi, Lake Isabella, and Boron. We are thankful for the many community partners that have worked with us to provide resources to our community, but I must thank our major partners. The amazing employees of the Kern County Department of Child Support Services who tirelessly raise the funds necessary to purchase the largest portion of the backpacks and school supplies. The Kern County Bar Association, charitable foundation, Channel 23 ABC, Kern Schools Federal Credit Union, Kern Family Healthcare, Kern County Behavioral and Recovery Services, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, and last but not least, the Kern County Fair. There are many others, but we just don't have time to recognize everyone. Finally, 75% of child support is collected via wage assignment. We will be having an employer workshop on Thursday, August 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00 to work with our partners and help them to answer any questions they have. I'm thankful for the partners you see standing with me today. I have Renee Killian from Kern Schools Federal Credit Union, Teresa Hitchcock from the CAO's office, America's Job Center, County City Utes from DHS, the Department of Human Services, Andy Apple from the libraries. I invite each of you to come out to our events in Bakersfield and Ridgecrest. I think you will have a great time seeing the faces of the children as they receive their backpacks. It is a phenomenal moment. Thank you for your time, and remember, child support creates a better life for children. Thank you.
Nice presentation, and thank you to all of our partners for your efforts. The next item on the agenda, item number three, is proclaim July 16 through the 22nd, 2017, as Probation Services Week in Kern County, and Supervisor Gleason will make this presentation.
Motion on proclamation. Second.
Please cast your votes.
I usually invite the people who are receiving the proclamation down to help share the honor, but there's so many here, I don't think we could do that. So can I ask the members of the probation department, please stand, if you don't mind, and remain standing for a couple minutes while we honor you and thank you for the great work and your contributions to our community. Thanks a lot. Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed July 16th to 22nd, 2017, as Probation Services Week in Kern County. Recognition has been entered in the official Board Minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Chairman Zack Scrivener. Probation Department does a lot more than appears so obvious on the service. They work each and every day on the front lines with probationers to hold them accountable for crimes against our family, friends, and neighbors. They implement vital services to reduce recidivism, break the cycle of reoffending. The Kern County Probation Department plays a pivotal role within the justice system, collaborating with virtually every social service and law enforcement agency. Probation officers are problem solvers, prevention specialists, motivators, educators, facilitators, and oftentimes are the only support system many offenders have. Not only do our probation officers serve others through their profession, they're also actively involved in our community, whether they're a baseball coach, a softball coach, football coach, wherever you see them, all over the place. Can't get rid of them. You know, I've been on multiple rides, two rides, maybe three, with the probation department in the Indian Wells Valley, and firsthand experience in spending a morning with what these people do. And it's a very difficult job emotionally. It's a very rewarding job because the success can be obvious, but the pains you see and the difficulties and the climate that these people operate in is challenging, to say the least. I don't believe anyone can get enough credit for doing what they do, especially when they work daily in an environment that seemingly has no end. So my hat's off to the men and women of the probation department. My hat's off to their leadership, and it's with the sincerest form of gratitude, I introduce to you their chief, T.R. Merkel. T.R. [applause]
Thank you Supervisor Gleason, and want to thank Chairman Scrivener and the members of the board for this proclamation, and all the support that you've shown the probation department for what we do. I also want to thank CAO Ryan Alsop and his team. We've had a lot of good communication and working together these last seven months, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the opportunity to recognize the staff of the probation department. Probation plays a vital role in the criminal justice system and provides a multitude of services. This last year, we completed over 5,000 felony and juvenile sentencing reports for the courts. We operate three juvenile facilities where high-risk juvenile offenders are detained and rehabilitated. We run community programs that offer evidence-based treatment, such as our day reporting center, our adult programming center, and our juvenile programming unit. We also supervise offenders in the community. We have over 150 armed staff who go out every day supervising 9,000 adult felony offenders and 2,000 juvenile offenders. The profession of probation is unique because of its dual roles, where part law enforcement officer and part agent of change. This could be summed up in accountability and opportunity. We hold offenders accountable and keep the community safe by ensuring their compliance with their terms of their probation, and we bring them before the court if they are not in compliance. We often work with our law enforcement partners in operations and task force, but we can provide even longer-term community safety when we break the wheel of recidivism by providing the opportunity for offenders to change. We do this with our collaborations with other departments, such as behavioral health, ETR, and many community-based organizations, and many more. We also do this by providing evidence-based treatment, which has been proven to work, and reduce recidivisms. I'd like to share just a couple quick stories about some of the work that my staff's done this past year. This past year, our adult high-risk offender unit teamed with the U.S. Marshals Sexual Offender Investigation Unit regarding a sexually violent predator who had absconded. Through communication and working together, this offender was apprehended and returned to custody. Recently, a deputy probation officer, Kathy Speck, in juvenile investigations, received a note from a mother thanking her for her work with her daughter. Her daughter was sent to the Pathways Academy, which is a juvenile commitment program for females. Their juvenile correction officers work to rehabilitate minors. The mother said that this program helped turn her life around. She's since graduated from high school and is now enrolled at Bakersfield College. In her note, she said, quote, "None of this could have happened if not for your care and compassion. Thank you for helping me find my daughter again." Part of Deputy Probation Officer Scott Winslow's responsibility are offenders in the Kern River Valley. When he's in the area, he usually contacts the on-duty deputy sheriff to let him know he's there and to offer any assistance. One day in June, assistance was required because a kayaker had overturned and was lost in the river. Officer Winslow was able to respond and locate the kayaker and help direct search and rescue to rescue him. In March, deputy probation officers contacted a probationer at his house and his brother, both known gang members. They found ammunition in plain sight and was able to get a search warrant from the court in order to access a locked room. There, they located a 12-gauge shotgun and a .357 Magnum revolver, both of which were reported stolen. They also located 170 rounds of ammunition. They were arrested and sentenced to CDCR. The last story I want to share is about a mandatory supervision offender. This is an AB 109 probationer. With our evidence-based assessment, he was assessed to be at high risk to reoffend. We placed him in our adult programming center in October of 2016, and at first, he was resistant, as many of our probationers are. However, our probation program specialist worked with him, and he has since completed multiple evidence-based treatment programs. He is now, has full-time employment, has recently purchased a car and insurance, and is working to secure his own apartment. And now, he is a leader in those same evidence-based treatment classes that he was once resistant to. He will terminate from status in October, but because of this program and the work of our staff, he will be ready to be a protective member of our community. I hope these few stories have showed the various roles and the balanced approach that the probation department takes. This, of course, is just the tip of the iceberg of what our officers do every single day, and there are many more stories. I'm honored, and it's a privilege, to be the chief of a department with so many professional, dedicated, and passionate staff. So this week, and really throughout the whole year, I ask that when you meet a probation officer, or a juvenile correction officer, or a program specialist, or a probation support staff, that you thank them for the important role that they play in keeping Kern County safe. Thank you.
Thanks to your team for everything that you do for us out there, and thank you Supervisor Gleason. Next item on the agenda will be public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. And so I'll ask now if there are any members of the audience that would like to make a public presentation. Don't see any hands. Are you coming down, ma'am? Okay. We ask you to state your name and observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Leal, and I'm here on behalf of Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. As we continue to work on the county budget, I just had a few questions and follow-ups in regards to who to talk to afterwards. Working with community members, a lot of the talk is in regards to investing in parks and recreation, and as we know, the General Services has merged together with the Parks and Recs. So just following up to have a more clear understanding in regards to the numbers of how this merge is going to go in regards to investing in parks and recreations. So on my behalf is the comparison between the years in both staffing levels and spending, as well with an explanation to where these reductions are going due to the economics of scales, and where the services cuts are going. Maybe this information has been provided before, but having a person to direct myself to would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we could probably get you a quick answer. First of all, Mr. Alsop, who would you like her to provide contact information to in order to get some of that detailed information she requested? Okay, we have Elsa Martinez. She will help you. Thank you. Any other public presentations? Okay, seeing none, then I'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One announcement, and that's I won't be here at the PM session today. I need to be at a special meeting at CASERA. And secondly, I'd like to make a referral. I asked for information, I don't know, three or four weeks ago about the potential ordinance that would allow for cost recovery for rescue efforts on the Kern River, and I think I'd like to move forward with that, if it's the pleasure of the board. So I know there are a lot of details to work out in that. What exactly are our costs? How would they be calculated? That type of thing. But I would just like to refer that to staff to take a look at and potentially, and bring back to us maybe a report on what that ordinance might look like, so the board could make a determination whether they want to move forward with that or not. So that's, does that require a vote, that referral?
Why don't we go ahead and do a vote as a formal referral?
Thank you, I'll move that.
I'll second the referral.
You have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now Supervisor Maggert, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit parallel to that, but I think a bit broader about the issue I'm going to first mention is the issue of whether or not we should place signage along county-owned properties along the river, in addition to the signage that is at the mouth of the canyon about the dangers, the imminent danger of entering the river. I sent an email to Mr. Alsop about this recently, and would now like to formally refer to staff the question of whether or not we should post those. I am surprised, disappointed, amazed are not strong enough words, as I am often in the Hart Park Kern River Campgrounds, Lake Ming area. It is profound how many families are placing their, not only their own lives, but the lives of their very, very small children, three, four, five, six years old, as they wade out into the river, and they're wading out into the river from land that we own and control. So one question is whether or not we should prohibit people from doing that. The question that I'm interested in dealing with immediately, though, is whether or not we should have other signage up that reminds them, because I'm not aware of any signage here on the valley floor, other than at the mouth of the canyon, that warns people, but I think we should think about warning them more specifically. If it's possible, I don't want to make more work of this than it should be, but I think it would be profound to those who read those signs to know that this number of people have drowned entering at Hart Park. This number of people have drowned entering from these campgrounds, this exact spot you're standing in. I think it would be helpful to let people know that, and I hope there's a day when I don't see children with their parents standing beside them or on the shore wading into that river. That's just, somebody tragedies wouldn't happen. So I'd like to refer that issue to staff and ask you to, maybe that can be a part of Supervisor Couch's referral, because the issue of making people pay would require a notice, which would require signage. So it might be appropriate to do that.
I'm sorry, excuse me. If you're amenable to make a part of that referral, that works.
I'm amenable to do that, yes, thank you.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. The second issue I'd like to bring up as we move forward in our budget process is, I'd like to have a report here in public about the utilization cost of our legacy health plan, and whether or not we are managing that health plan in a way that is effective enough, and if there are areas where we should try to save more dollars. So that may be a part of what you're going to present today in our presentation to us, but I think it would be helpful for us to look at that area and how much we might be able to save in general fund dollars by reducing utilization costs and managing them more effectively.
Supervisor Gleason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a vote for the referral from Supervisor Couch. I'm not sure I would vote in favor of Supervisor Maggert's. So what I ask that we do is, instead of merging the two, let's have a vote in each one, so we can separate the two, please. Would that be okay?
Yes.
I'd be happy, then, to make a motion that we refer to staff the issue of signage. I did not intend to include in that the issue of excluding or preventing people from entering the river. I did not include that. I want to make sure that's clear. I want to make sure that's clear. But I do want to refer to staff the question of whether or not we should have signage that explains the danger of entering the river from county-owned lands, along the Hart Park corridor, from the barbecue grounds all the way down to the Hart Park.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. You have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes. One opposed. Supervisor Gleason.
Any other board member announcements or reports? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number nine, under Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. We're actually going to hear items nine and 10 concurrently, but we will vote separately on those. And so first is item nine. I'm just going to leave this to you. We have Bill Walker with us. He heads up our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Mr. Walker, I'm going to leave it to you to explain what these two items are. Nine and 10, we're going to hear concurrently, but we will vote separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Bill Walker, your current Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Director. Before I start, I really thought that Chief Miracle did an excellent job presenting the probation department, and our department works hand-in-hand with them. And I know how excellent they are, and I know how much you would like to hear those kind of stories. And I just want to applaud what he did today. I thought that was really, really what we need to hear, and many departments are doing that kind of work every day. That being said, I have something that's less exciting to bring to you. As introduced before you today are two requests for relief of accountability letters. Both letters cover the same time period from 2006 to 2016, or approximately 10 years. Both letters are for indigent uninsured care. The first letter is for the collection of accounts receivable for indigent uninsured housing. The second letter is for indigent uninsured patient accounts. It is routine to bring these requests for relief of accountability letters annually, and it was uncovered that the mechanism for letter submission was disrupted when our department implemented its electronic medical record in 2006. Therefore, even though our records were in complete compliance, the bringing the letter to the board every year did not continue after that transition. Measures are already in place, so that our proper submission of the request for relief accountability letters, beginning with the two letters of catch-up that we're bringing with you today, will be... are in place, so that these letters will come annually. These write-offs are routine. They have no impact on the department's budget and have no impact on the county budget or the general fund. Both letters are for indigent uninsured care, which are people who do not have funds. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the request for relief from accountability of 358 accounts totaling $1,52,018.73 for the period July 1, 2006 to February 23, 2016. And it is also recommended that your board approve the request for relief from accountability of 24,682 accounts totaling $10,468,562.2 for the period of July 1, 2006 to February 23, 2016. That concludes my remarks, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'll ask if there are any questions from members of the board before I go to the public. Okay. Seeing none, I'll open this up and ask if there is any members of the public that would like to make comment on these two items.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael Turnipseed, representing Kern Tax. I just want to thank Mr. Walker, who gave a good phone call last week and explained all the ins and outs, and really what this was all about, is really taking care of indigent care, because when you see $11 million, it's just kind of getting written off. But those phone calls that I get from department heads are really appreciated, and I get them fairly regularly, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to thank Mr. Walker for that. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll return to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Couch.
Do we need one motion or two?
We need a motion on nine, and then we'll need one on two. We need to vote separately on those items.
I'll move the staff's recommendation on item nine.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. And now item 10.
Same motion.
Okay. You have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
That motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda will be item 12. This is under the County Administrative Office. Fiscal Year 2017-18 General Fund and Fire Fund Budget Discussion. And I will turn to our CAO, Ryan Alsop, to start us off. Good morning, Mr. Alsop.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As of the close of last fiscal year, July 1, the county continues to battle a large structural deficit in its general and fire funds. The price of oil is predicted to remain flat for some time. While the county is currently on a path to address its fiscal crisis over the next three years, we have a long way to go to fiscal health and sustainability. Much more work is to be done. We are planning and implementing structural change for the long term. Aided by increased property tax revenue and ongoing countywide mitigation strategies, the county's structural budget deficit in the general fund stands at 19.8 million. The fire fund has an ongoing structural budget deficit of 8.5 million. Both general and fire funds are balanced with a combination of spending reductions, use of fund balance carryforward, and minimal use of reserves. Both funds prioritize critical countywide strategic objectives. The recommended FY 17-18 budget embodies several successes, including strengthening public safety efficacy, maintaining library and spay and neuter services, funding the opening of the new jail facility, funding major maintenance projects countywide, designating funding for park capital improvement, addressing future pension costs, reducing the overall structural deficit, and relying far less on one-time reserves for ongoing operations than was anticipated. This budget utilizes $12 million less in county reserves than was planned at this time last year. Along with increases in property-related revenue, the board's fiscal mitigation plan has now resolved more than 50% of the county's original structural deficit caused by the significant loss of $63 million in oil and gas property revenues over the last three years. This effort has been undertaken without any mass layoffs or significant service-level impacts. Restricted hiring and countywide "hiring from within," quote-unquote, where over 60 positions have been moved from general fund to non-general fund departments since January of this year, continue to result in substantial savings in personnel costs. The diligent efforts of departments who are making tough decisions in transitioning from a one-year budget practice to implementing a long-view financial implementation plan is contributing to significant ongoing savings and has also led to significant one-time fund balance carryforward. This recommended budget designates $28.6 million of one-time net fund balance carryforward to one-time projects and future pension cost escalation. $5 million is recommended for major maintenance projects countywide. $2 million is recommending for parks' major capital improvement. And $21.6 million is recommended to be designated to paying for future pension cost escalation of $13 million annually, beginning fiscal year 2018-19 for both the general and fire funds. I would like to ask Nancy Lawson, Assistant CAO for Budget and Finance, to provide further detail to your board.
Good morning, Ms. Lawson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is the second meeting held to discuss the development of the fiscal year 17-18 budget specifically for the general and fire funds. At the first meeting on June 20, your board approved the preliminary budget. The focus of today's discussion is to inform your board of the final year-end fund balances and final property tax revenue estimates. The net fund balance carryforward from fiscal year 16-17 for the general fund is approximately $28.6 million. This net fund balance is the remaining available after the rebudget of prior major maintenance projects not fully completed by the year-end, rebudget of the 16-17 Sheriff's Academy costs not yet reimbursed, re-establishment of budget incentive savings, or BSI credits for departments that closed a fund balance at year-end, and approximately $10.1 million to bridge the gap related to the deficit of the general fund. As Mr. Alsop indicated, the remaining $28.6 million of one-time net fund balance carryforward has been allocated towards one-time projects and reserved for future use. You may recall that no allocation of general fund resources were used last year to maintain critical county infrastructure. Therefore, $5 million has been allocated to major maintenance projects throughout the county. To address potential enhancements and repair of county parks, $2 million has been designated for parks' capital infrastructure. The remaining balance of $21.6 million is recommended for future pension cost escalation anticipated in fiscal year 18-19 related to actuarial assumption changes imposed by the Kern County Employees Retirement Association Board. The pension increase for the general fund and fire fund combined is estimated at $13 million annually. This full amount was initially scheduled to begin in fiscal year 18-19. However, the retirement board is now allowing a three-year phase-in of those increases. The retirement designation would temporarily alleviate the concern of funding the pension increases, at the same time, departments are making ongoing reductions to mitigate the structural deficits. The fire fund's fund balance carryforward is $1.9 million and will be set aside for future staffing reduction costs, sorry, retention costs related to positions under the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or safer two-year grant funding. Property assessed values were also finalized at year-end by the Kern County Assessor. The assessor's final net assessed value roll is $90.6 billion, which is an increase of 5.16 billion, or 6% from fiscal year 16-17. The final assessment roll results in a $15.9 million increase in property-related revenue for the general fund from last fiscal year. The increased revenue is helping to offset $5 million in declines of the other revenue sources, fund $6.2 million in additional costs related to the new jail for correctional medicine and utilities, and eliminates the use of $4.7 million of reserves for ongoing The fire fund's property tax revenue estimate has increased by approximately $900,000, which will reduce the use of one-time fund balance carryforward originally needed towards the fund's deficit. The general fund ended the fiscal year with a total of $141.6 million in reserves and designations. The fiscal year 17-18 recommended budget includes a minimal reduction in reserves of $3.988 million exclusively for the fire fund contribution for pension escalation. Reserves are increasing for tax litigation, IT projects, roads improvements, and future retirement cost increases. With the additional property tax revenue included, the revised anticipated use of reserves over the next three years to support operations of the general fund and the fire fund has decreased from $38 million to $26 million. This is a total reduction in use of reserves of approximately $12 million from the original projected four-year plan. We have provided a list of the reserve and designation account balances at June 30, 2017 in Attachment A of your board document. You may recall that the county started last fiscal year with a deficit for the general fund of about $44 million. The projected deficit for fiscal year 17-18 with final property tax estimates is approximately $19.8 million, a 55% reduction. The net fund balance carryforward and additional property tax revenue are sufficient to balance the general fund with only the release of reserves for the fire fund contribution for pension cost. Fiscal discipline, increased property tax revenue, and greater use of fund balance carryforward has contributed to a reduced reliance on these reserves. Since last fiscal year, departments have achieved 8.5% in net general fund cost reductions as part of the mitigation plan. The estimated NGFC reductions needed for the final two years of the plan are expected to be at least 2.5% each year, depending on the future revenue and expenses that we analyze each year. The general fund is on target to meet the deficit mitigation plan. There's no action required of your board today, however, we would be pleased to hear any direction you have regarding the budget prior to budget hearings. Upon completion of today's session, we will finalize the fiscal year 17-18 recommended budget document for your board's consideration at budget hearings scheduled to begin on August 29, 2017. That concludes my comments, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Lawson, thank you very much. I'll ask if there are any comments from the board before I go to the public. Okay. Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to make comment on this?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Lisa Green, Kern County District Attorney. I would just like to take this opportunity to tell the board and thank the board, but beginning with thanking CAO Ryan Alsop and our analyst Brent Currie. We've worked together since, I'm sure you know, but since the June 20 meeting, and have been able to reach an agreement that is acceptable. And I wanted to particularly and particularly thank both of them, but I also wanted to thank all five of you for what I would call just reaffirming your commitment to public safety in this county. I know that my office can work with this and continue our mission of protecting public safety. So thank you so much.
De'A Green, thank you very much. We appreciate that greatly, and thank you for working with us as well. Good job, Ryan. And Nancy. Excellent job. Any other comments? And Brent. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience? Okay. Seeing none, I'll return to the board. Looks like what we've been doing has been working, folks. Any comments from members of the board? Supervisor Gleason.
Could you tell me, we've been so upset, can you give us a reduction of the actuarial numbers?
So we put some numbers in there. I forget the exact what you said for the reduction in the... or the additional costs because of the reduction, the actual rate of return. What is the rate of return, and where is it now, and where is it going? 7.5 to 7.25, is that what it was?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, correct? It's at 7.5, and it's reducing to seven and a quarter.
Thank you. And the... one of the results of having this budget and the diligent management of our reserves, the reduction of the $12 million in our reserves, is going to be a constant, hopefully, a rating by our bond agencies that's going to be consistent with the excellent ratings we've had in the past. Is that correct? Can we expect that?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, that it should be a very positive note to them.
Okay. I've got a million questions, but I don't want to take all the time now to do that. But I do want to make a comment to all department heads, and just right now. I'm sure we'll have more comments as we go forward, but this would not be possible without all of you and all of your diligent efforts and the new culture we're embracing of trying to satisfy public safety, satisfy all our requirements, and do it with the minimum cost and max benefit to the taxpayer. So my hat's off to all the department heads. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Any other comments from members of the board? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to echo Supervisor Gleason's comments. It wasn't just getting some improvement in our property tax outlook, but it was all the money that our departments have saved over the course of the year that's made this budget possible for us not to have to dig deeper into our reserves, and the work that our CAO's office, the budget team, and all the departments have done all year long, and also preparing for the next year, which we know is likely to be rough as well, has gotten us so far to this point, where, as I said, the plan we've put in place is working for us. So I'll entertain a motion to receive and file. The clerk and I...
Motion.
Certainly.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Excellent, everybody. Okay. Next item on the agenda is under the library. This is item 15. Report on the Northeast Branch Library relocation, grand opening, celebration, and volunteer recognition. And we have our interim director, Andy Apple, for our library system. Good morning, Ms. Apple.
Good morning. I'm here with some good news, of course. The Northeast Branch Library moved and opened July 1 in its new location, with our official grand opening this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. So of course Supervisor Maggert will be there speaking with other public officials, and I'm inviting all of you as well. But to make that move happen, I have all these lovely people behind me, and I want to recognize the outstanding work from county staff, the two departments, General Services, and of course, the library staff, but our community volunteers. We had Eagle Scout working on his Eagle Scout project, Mr. Benjamin Neville, right? And then Mr. Jeff Hill and his staff. As you guys know, when there's moves... As you guys know, when there's moves, there's always delays. And his staff did what was supposed to be done in two weeks in one week, and we wouldn't have opened if it wasn't for his staff. And then, after their staff, these lovely people came and helped put the stuff back on the shelves. So please give a big round of applause to this lovely group of people to make this work. So I hope to see most of you this Thursday. Supervisor Maggard, looking forward to see you as well. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Maggard.
Andy and all of you, I just want to tell you thank you very much. We were in jeopardy of losing the Northeast Branch, and we'll celebrate on Thursday the fact that we did not, and that is due to the effort of many, many people. Thank you for helping make, be a part of making it work, and I just congratulate and celebrate with you, Andy, that that's gone so well, and we'll have many other thanks for other people involved on Thursday, but thank you very much.
Absolutely, and I did forget one person, Officer Money, former retired sergeant from our Sheriff's Department. He's now at Golden Valley High School, and his kids helped as well, so thank you, Officer Money.
Very good, thank you. From Golden Valley, going to the Northeast. I like that.
Exactly, and they're going to be there Thursday, too.
What's the thing about sun, what do you call this, sun-provided smores, or solar-powered smores? What is that?
It's a craft. Yeah, it's at 3:30, so if you want to stick around, you can find out.
Because I thought Money and I might like to have some smores that day, but I guess not.
Well, maybe we can make that happen for you.
All right, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Thank you.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much, Andy, for the marvelous job and the incredible energy you bring to everything that you do. So, thank you, and a special thank you to my dear friend, Mr. Money. I've always preferred you in the blues, I've told you that before. You're looking good. John, no offense to our sheriff, of course, and your many decades there, but really appreciate your lifetime investment into young people and perpetually improving relationships with law enforcement, our community, our young people. Putting them on the right path very early is so critical. And I don't know anyone who does it more or better than you, so, all my love, John, to you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Excellent job. Thanks so much for your help. All right, last item on our agenda today for the morning is item 19, and we're going to transition now to Public Health Services, and we'll have our Director of Public Health, Matt Constantine, start us off on this, but this is a request to set a public hearing to consider proposed ordinance deleting Chapter 5.52, amending Sections 5.04.020 and 5.04.160, and adding Chapter 8.70 relating to massage practitioners and massage establishments and repeal uncodified ordinance G-8631, and adopt new uncodified ordinance related to service and permit fees for environmental health. I think I might let you do that when we, next time when we have the hearing. Mr. Constantine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined this morning by Bren Kerrigan. We're here today to talk a little bit about a massage ordinance and to ask the board to consider changes to the current ordinance. The request from the department is to set a hearing five weeks from today on August 22. The proposed changes would strengthen the existing requirements, require all massage establishments to obtain an annual permit from Public Health, and require each establishment to be routinely inspected. At the March 7, 2017, board meeting, you received a complaint from Ms. Lisa Woods, an Oildale business owner, complaining about the massage facility adjacent to her business that was likely engaging in prostitution. At the request of Supervisor Maggard, the department began to evaluate the statements made at the board meeting and to research how other jurisdictions address the concerns. The department has met with Ms. Woods and another Oildale business owner who have strong concerns. We have met with detectives at the Bakersfield Police Department, and we have reviewed their recent findings of prostitution and enforcement actions that they have taken, and we have spoken with other California jurisdictions on how they approach massage facilities, and we've evaluated how they have developed their ordinances. In our meeting with the Bakersfield Police Department, they have made mention that they respond to complaints often, and in fact, in more than 80% of the time when they respond, they actually find some type of prostitution occurring. In addition, we were referred to a fee-based website that's used by individuals when they are talking about sexual acts that occur in our local establishments. For these reasons, the Kern County Public Health Services Department is requesting that your board consider substantial changes to the ordinance related to the regulation of massage establishments. It's also important to note that there currently is an old county massage ordinance, however, the ordinance is no longer in compliance with state law, as state law has been amended several times, and the county's current ordinance does not align with the city of Bakersfield's ordinance, which causes some confusion as it relates to consistency. So I'm going to ask Bren to provide an overview of the details of the ordinance from here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The proposed ordinance will require massage practitioners operating within Kern County to obtain their massage practitioner certification through the California Massage Therapy Council. Going forward, I'll refer to that as CAMTC. CAMTC was created by California Legislature through the enactment of Senate Bill 731 as a nonprofit organization staffed by a volunteer board of directors appointed by California cities, counties, law enforcement, massage schools, the Department of Consumer Affairs, professional massage associations, and other stakeholders. The purpose of CAMTC is to certify massage therapy professionals consistently throughout the state, ensuring they meet specific educational criteria, and to enforce regulations on massage therapy professionals. Additionally, the proposed ordinance will allow the Kern County Public Health Services Department to regulate massage establishments in Kern County to ensure they maintain a safe and sanitary environment and to establish reasonable standards to reduce opportunities for acts of prostitution and human trafficking to occur in massage establishments. The proposed ordinance requires owners of massage establishments to apply for a permit through Kern County Public Health Services Department, including a background check and ensuring proposed massage establishments meet the minimum requirements of Kern County Building Code. If approved, the department will provide an educational class to the owner and the staff of the massage establishment, reviewing the requirements of the ordinance, including proper sanitation practices and appropriate conduct. The department will conduct an annual inspection of each permitted establishment to ensure compliance with the ordinance. The department will also partner with Kern County Sheriff to investigate all complaints and reports of suspected or known prostitution and/or human trafficking activities in massage establishments. In order to administer the ordinance, the department will need to hire an additional staff member. This employee will be tasked with the following: reviewing the results of the live scan fingerprint background check to ensure compliance with the ordinance requirements prior to approving massage establishment permit applications; pre-operation site inspections to ensure compliance with the requirements of the ordinance, including compliance with Kern County Building Code; conducting an educational class for the owner and all staff of the massage establishment, reviewing proper sanitation methods and appropriate massage practitioner conduct; issuing massage establishment permits once all application requirements have been completed and approved; annually conducting inspections of all massage establishments to ensure compliance with the ordinance; managing the complaint hotline and conducting follow-up inspections on all complaints received related to massage establishments; coordinating undercover investigations with the Kern County Sheriff's Office; locating non-permitted massage establishments in Kern County; and issuing all administrative enforcement notices, assessing monetary penalties, and working with massage establishment owners to obtain and maintain compliance. There will be no additional fee for the application for a massage establishment permit, live scan fingerprint background check, pre-operational site inspection, or educational class. A permit fee is required to reimburse the county for the cost for this program. As we stated earlier, the department will need to hire an additional staff member to perform these tasks. The annual cost of this position, including benefits, is $100,000. Additionally, this fee will need to reimburse the Kern County Sheriff for costs incurred for investigating complaints related to prostitution and/or human trafficking. It is estimated the sheriff will be required to spend eight hours per month on these investigations. It is also estimated that half of the complaints would be founded, and the massage establishment would be billed for the actual costs incurred by the sheriff in these instances. It is estimated that the unreimbursed cost for the sheriff will be $15,500 annually. Additionally, the department will incur a $60 fee for every facility owner to undergo a live scan fingerprint background check. The department safely estimates that there are at least 75 massage establishments in the unincorporated areas of Kern County. Therefore, the total live scan costs are estimated to be $4,500, which also needs to be reimbursed through the permit fee. Given the annual estimated unreimbursed costs for this program are $120,000, there are approximately 75 massage establishments within the unincorporated areas of Kern County. The required annual permit fee to fully reimburse the cost of this program is $1,600. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that concludes our remarks. There are members in the audience who would like to address your board on this topic. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would invite Glenn Fippen with Bakersfield Police Department to the podium.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Detective Glenn Fippen with the Bakersfield Police Department Vice Unit. I've been asked by Matt and Bren to talk briefly about some of the numbers that we incur when we do our inspections. Part of what I do is the citizen complaints that come in for massage establishments in the city, I review those. From that, I'm able to put together an undercover operation. I would say within a month's time, we're doing four to five undercover operations. Of that, we're getting a 90% arrest violation rate within just the city. Within, in that, we're able to determine if we have victims of human trafficking, if we have unlicensed massage practitioners that are committing the violations, so on and so forth. To put it in kind of a perspective for numbers, when we talk about establishments within the city and their permitting, they're aware that they can go to the county, and there's not the requirements. I hate to say that, we push them out, but it does happen. And just as Matt and Bren both spoke about, you're getting what we call the bad places, they're headed to the unincorporated county areas.
Do we have any questions? Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it. So I'm assuming you're telling us that Bakersfield has an ordinance?
That's correct, sir.
And it's stronger than our old ordinance?
Absolutely, it's in line with what Bren just presented.
That's, that was my question. So it's kind of like mirroring, we're going to have similar ordinances at the end of the day, if this gets passed?
Yes, sir.
How many massage parlors in Bakersfield? We said we have 75 in unincorporated Kern, how many in Bakersfield?
Without looking at hard numbers, I'd say we're at the 70 to 80 marker that are licensed establishments with a permit establishment license.
Okay, so these, let's say these 70 places have your permit, which we're trying to get to something similar to. You go in four to eight times a month, you may hit four, eight, eight of these places a month, did you say?
Four to five, sir, that are generated strictly off of citizen complaints.
Okay, you get a citizen complaint, so you go to four to five, and you go different ones every month, I'm assuming?
That's correct. We've had instances-
Do all of them get complaints?
Not all of them, no.
What percentage gets complaints?
The actual percentage is very low, I would say it's in the maybe 20%.
So most of the people who get these massage parlors who comply with the ordinance, the Bakersfield ordinance that you have, most of them?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so it's the outliers that aren't. And you say 90% of the visits you have result in arrests?
That's correct.
For what?
Prostitution violations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Detective, for being here today. Is it accurate that the ordinance we are proposing to approve today is a mirror image of the city's, or does it, does our ordinance have components in it that we would hope the city might come into compliance with, for example, prohibiting the establishment for reopening for a year and the potential permanent cessation of their ability to be able to operate?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, they are similar, and that was the intent. We have added additional requirements in the county's ordinance that requires an ongoing inspection, a health inspection, if you will, looking at health and safety issues beyond the prostitution and undercover stings that are being done. We've added some additional strength in enforcement, administrative enforcement that we can address with the businesses, but otherwise, they are similar. Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Detective, thank you very much for being here today.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, seeing none, so the recommended action is for us to set the public hearing on Tuesday, August 22 at 9:00 a.m. So do we have a-
Mr. Chairman, I'll do this.
I'm going to go ahead and ask if there are any other members of the audience that would like to make comment. Thank you, Detective, appreciate it. Got a little ahead of myself.
Good morning, Chairman, Scripter.
Good morning.
I own a business in Oildale. I started about seven years ago.
Could you say your name, please?
Christopher Vaughn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scripter. I'm a medically retired veteran, U.S. Coast Guard, seven years. I have owned a small business for seven years down in the county, since starting my business in 9308 on Norris Road. I've embattled marijuana pot shops next to me and skyrocketing crime increase. Bad economy, and my next hurdle I have is I have an illegal, illicit massage parlor next door to my business. I have a little bit of insight on this. I used to do human trafficking for the U.S. government. So it's a little disheartening that when I go to work every day, I have a state license that hangs on my wall. I answer to all local authorities and to the state in regards to my license and how I practice and how I do business. Next door to me have people that aren't monitored, they do what they choose, they do it blatantly. I've been a witness to what Mr. Constantine talked about, the website. It was pretty disturbing to know that in a wall adjacent to my business that I have law enforcement, I have family members, I have men, women, and children in my parking lot coming in, I have other people that are coming in there to do criminal activity. It's, it's not good, and it's really blatant from what I've seen. This whole thing that's going on with massage parlors has to be stopped. Marijuana took a stab at our county, and they put a burden, a toll on the taxpayer. It was horrendous. What Mr. Constantine is proposing, I believe, is the best route and approach that we can have, and that is to hold them regards to fingerprinting, hold regards to an actual license, and tell them, look, you're going to follow the law, abide by the law. If you're not going to do a lawful practice, you're not going to do business here in the This is organized crime, basically, is what I'm trying to tell you folks from what I've witnessed. I've got about nine cameras in front of my shop, and it's ironic that people park in the farthest parking spot from my business, walk on the public parking sidewalk around my shop, then scurry on up into this facility. I've had three of my customers personally gone in for an actual massage, and were solicited. It's pretty, it's pretty disturbing to hear that, that my customers solicited, to come back and tell me, I have to do this, I can't do anything. I told my landlord, nothing happens. I know we're out of money, I know we're on a tight budget. I think this is going to be the best attack we've got, guys. It needs to be done. And just to let you know, we're dealing with a cultural issue, too, in these massage parlors. You could take every person out of that office every week, and you could put them away till the light of day, and somebody else is going to pop up and take their place. I have to know for a fact that these people live in apartments of sometimes 10 to 15 people in an apartment illegally, and they switch out every 24 hours, and they do this job. And they're told if they don't do this job, that their family members back in China will be hurt or killed. So it's, it's, it's human trafficking, and I think you guys know about what, how that pertains to your state and how Kern County is a mega for human trafficking. So this is what's going on, and this is what I'm going to talk to you folks about. And as a taxpayer, I don't want to see this. Governor Brown dumped this in your lap because in 2014 he washed his hands of it. It's ironic that's something that he couldn't enforce, he had a problem with, he went like this and put it on to you folks. So for two years, they've had the ability to do what they want to do and go about how they want to do it. I moved to Oildale for two reasons. I was born in Bakersfield as a child, I've worked in Oildale to make it a better place, I run a family establishment, and next door to me, I've got organized crime operating. And there's nothing that can be done about it as of now, but- But if you folks pass this ordinance that Mr. Konstantin proposes, it will make a difference. And I beg of you to do something now, because if you don't, it's gonna get way out of hand, and it's already there, I believe. Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, thank you for being here and sharing your story with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments, please? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Woods. I'm not even sure where to start. I'm gonna make this as brief as possible, because I think they did an amazing job. But I do want to thank you guys for considering this amazing proposal to help our area. And like you said, you know, Bakersfield City, they're being pushed out of the city into the county, and unfortunately, it's right where my grandkids go to school. And unfortunately, we own businesses. And our community is amazing, and when something goes wrong, that community pulls together like no other I've ever seen. And I am just pleading that you really consider this amazing tool, I guess you could say. I'm not very educated when it comes to all this, but, you know, I'm just one person that I'm trying to be a voice for the whole community. And I really do appreciate Mr. Maggard for, I mean, it was just like a domino effect. You know, one stand, right here, made a domino to help. We're getting the support from law enforcement, from public health, everywhere. It's just amazing. And Mr. Maggard, I do appreciate you taking that stand and helping us out out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Return of the board. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. Why don't I defer to Supervisor Maggard, and I'll make a second.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I step in? Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Maggard, please.
Supervisor Couch for that. Occasionally, there are moments when one person makes a difference that changes the course of a community. And Lisa Woods, certainly assisted by Chris Vaughn, although Mr. Vaughn and I have not had the conversations that Ms. Woods and I have had. But the beautiful thing about where we live is that one person can still change the course of a community. And I want to single out Lisa Woods and Chris Vaughn for taking a stand here, because I want the rest of our community to recognize that the same power, the same influence, the same consequences that Ms. Woods and Mr. Vaughn have put in motion can be done by anyone in any neighborhood. This is a community that we will respond. So, and a message to all the other folks in our community that see problems in their neighborhoods and want to do something about it, these people can do it. They did it. You could do it, too. So, I encourage people to step up and do the same thing that Lisa and Chris have done. One question I heard asked was whether or not this should be at the business level, or whether or not it should be at the perpetrator, the person who is committing the crime. What is shocking to members of the public, and I think there would be outrage rampantly running through our community if the public knew where to look for things. But there is a website that, I don't know, Mr. Konstantin, if we want to say the name of the website, but there is a website that is kind of like Weed Maps. It tells people where to, Weed Maps tells people where to go by marijuana, wherever you want. Should I explain the name of the place? Okay. There's a website called, is it Rub? Rub Map. Rub Maps. And it's a site that, if you go on the site, it tells you where you can go get a massage with the, with the opportunity to solicit prostitution. Those businesses are operating right under our nose. The gas station that I go to, the little Mexican restaurant on the corner, the cleaners that I go to, the malt shop that I buy BLTs at every once in a while, are next door to a place that's doing this very thing. And we have no idea that that's going on in the midst of our neighborhoods. Our children are walking in front of it. It is, it is right under our noses, and we're not aware of it. That's why it needs to be done at the business level. So, I want to thank Matt Konstantin and Bren Carrigan for your work for the, for picking up the mantle and running with it here. Thanks again to Lisa Woods and Chris Vaughn for being able to do this, to step up and make a difference. And I hope that we can make a tremendous impact in what goes on here, and we can remove the scourge that this is from our, from our community out of here, as well as provide some protection for the horrible circumstance of women who are, for the most part, women, who are being victimized and taken advantage of under the threat of their very lives and that of their families. Human trafficking is a horrible thing. So, I would happily, let's see, we need to set a public hearing, make a motion to set a public hearing for Tuesday, August 22nd. Direct county council to prepare a notice of hearing, designate the county council as the official, to prepare a fair and adequate seminar as necessary in ordinances, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a notice of the hearing and summaries of proposed ordinances. I would make that motion, and thank my colleagues for the support, and thank again the public for stepping up.
Mr. Konstantin?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to acknowledge Kendra Graham, who has been just fantastic through this process. We've been working a lot on this whole new ordinance, so I just want to say thank you publicly to Ms. Graham for her help.
Thank you, Mr. Konstantin. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have several items to consider in closed session. Under County Administrative Office, we have items 26, 27, and 28, and under County Council, we have item 29. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session.
So moved.
We are adjourned.